Thank you. Welcome to the February 22nd, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting for the City of Malden. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Dearhog, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioner Pagliolunga.
Present.
Commissioner Sofield.
Present.
Commissioner Woolard.
Present.
And our chairman, Commissioner Paulson.
Present.
And I'll note that Mr. Ong indicated he would not be available tonight.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of all. Thank you.
Tonight's meeting is being held to consider the following agenda items. We're going to be reading and approving the minutes from the January Planning Commission Meeting. We're going to be reviewing a preliminary plat for Hollyview subdivision. And we're going to be reviewing text amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding light pole banners. There don't appear to be any members of the public here tonight. So normally I would talk about the rules for coming up and talking, but since there aren't any members of the public here, I'll probably skip past that part. So we'll go to, straight to review of minutes from the January meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the January minutes from Commissioner Woolard. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second to approve the minutes from Commissioner Pagliolunga. Any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor of approving the January meeting minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. It appears to be unanimous. The next item on the agenda tonight is a review of the preliminary plat for Hollyview subdivision. We're going to start with an introduction from staff. And since we don't have any public comments tonight, I won't go over the rules for public comment. Mr. Dearhog, will you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This agenda item is a request to approve the preliminary plat submitted for the Hollyview subdivision. This is located at Holly Ridge Court, which is back by where the Woodworkers Guild is. This development project is on approximately 12 acres. The applicant's proposing to develop and subdivide this tract for 85 attached, single-family homes. That will entail a density of about 6.8 units per acre. This tract is part of a planned development that's known as the Laurel Meadows PD. This PD was originally approved in 1997. And this particular section of the PD, well, let me back up, the PD was approved for multifamily, commercial, and single-family residential development. And this particular section that we're looking at tonight was part of what was identified as a multifamily tract. There's also a townhome community right next to it called the Laurel Heights Townhome Community, which was also part of this multifamily tract. The multifamily residential phase was to consist of no more than 400 units. Laurel Heights, which was developed around 2006, currently consists of 110 homes. And so with this additional 85 we're reviewing tonight, we are well under what was approved in the PD. Actually, less than half of that 400, just barely less than half. I'll go ahead and just comment on a couple of other things about this site, call them to your attention. Right now, there is a single entrance into this project located off of Holly Ridge Court. They've worked out some standards with the fire marshal that will enable them to to meet the access requirement, short of adding another one, really the topography and the way that the tract is laid out and cited, there's not really any other opportunity for access, unless it was to go through the townhome community that's next to this, Laurel Heights. And typically, established communities don't like new communities running their entrances through their own. So they've made this work with the single access off of Holly Ridge Court. There is a little bit of landscape plantings along the boundary with the Laurel Heights Townhouse Community. It's not a total screen, but certainly a few plantings there to help soften it. And then along the northern edge of the property, there's a creek there. And the applicant is planning to retain a buffer along that creek of the existing vegetation. So that should also help with some of the screening between them and the single-family neighborhood up there for Laurel Meadows. That concludes the introduction of this item. I'll be glad to share more of the staff report after the public comments, applicants' comments.
Thank you. Before I continue, do any commissioners, any members of the Planning Commission have any conflict of interest or ex parte communication regarding this item they'd like to disclose? Okay, none. Does the applicant wish to add anything at this time? We'll probably be a little back and forth, but if you'd like to add-
I'm going to end up standing up anyway, so I thought I'd go ahead and start. My name's Lynn Solzby. My address is 718 Lounce Hill Road, Greenville, South Carolina, 9607. The applicant is a civil engineer. I guess David's going to give a staff report, but he summarized what we're doing to start with pretty well. We have a 26-foot drive, we met with the fire marshal. He's fine with that to the first turn, and then there's that little cul-de-sac, which is 24 feet. We're well under the density. It does have challenging topography. We've done some very preliminary grading studies on it. It's challenging, but we feel confident we can figure out how to make it work. We have a PISAR for sewer from the city and REWAD. We went through SAC, and they have very minor comments, pretty boilerplate stuff from LDD primarily and that kind of stuff. So we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I'm just so unclear, there are no more members of the public here to make comments. Anyone online?
If you want to go ahead and just officially open it and ask if there are any comments, that way we can-
All right, we will open the floor to public comment if there are any. I don't see anything, so we'll close the floor. Do any members of the commission have any questions for the applicant? Just a few minutes, we're just making sure. While we're thinking about it. Mr. Dearhog, would you please provide the recommendation of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me conclude the report of staff. The builder hasn't been disclosed yet for this project, but the homes are projected to start in the low 200s. That range will be consistent or above the average price of home sales of the adjacent communities specifically. We looked at Laurel Heights and Laurel Meadows for the last couple of years. And you can see Laurel Heights, the adjacent townhome community, has had average sales around $150,000. And Laurel Meadows, which is a single-family residential community, has had their sales prices have been going up over the last year. They've gone from about $200,000 in 2020 to $240,000 in 2021. The applicant's proposing to preserve some trees near the front of the property and also preserve a 30-foot wide buffer of trees along the creek that I mentioned. I mentioned about the access point. Because there's only 85 units in this project, it doesn't meet the threshold for requiring a traffic study. However, we anticipate there shouldn't be any issues, especially since the intersection of Holly Ridge Court and West Butler Road is signalized now. There are not any amenities that you'll notice in the site plan, at least shown so far. And what the applicant's indicated is to keep the price point of the homes a little lower and more affordable. They're not proposing any amenities at this time, except for the open space that they're providing. Mr. Solzby commented about the subdivision advisory committee comments. Like he said, most of the comments there are pretty typical that the various agencies provide. The Greenville County Land Development Office did note that care will need to be taken not to increase the stormwater runoff that drains to the adjacent neighborhood. And all it meets with the statement of intent and what's been preliminarily approved for this PD. So it is consistent there. As far as the recommendation for this project, staff recommends that any approval of this preliminary plat, number one, that includes the following conditions, that number one, the applicant will meet the comments provided by the Greenville County Subdivision Advisory Committee. And number two, that the full civil and engineering and landscape plans will meet the standards in the codes and ordinances for the City of Malden. That concludes our report from staff.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the commission?
Mr. Dearhog, is the buffer that's going to be along that, I guess that's the northern property line where the stream is, is there a landscape buffer that is required, or are they just offering a buffer because of the retention of trees?
So this is a little different because it's a PD, and it's all part of the PD. When I went through the documents for for the PD, they said that there would be buffering provided, but it didn't specify the level of the buffering that needed to be provided. And remember, this is from back in 1997.
From the 90s.
Pretty old document, but so there wasn't any specificity of what needed to be provided, just that there would be some buffering provided.
So that is the same for the buffer that's been provided between the townhome developments? Is that it's just a buffer?
Right. Now, I'm not too worried about the, along the northern part, just because they will be keeping that stream buffer there. You know, certainly if you feel warranted, I think the applicant would be willing to look at some additional provisions if need be next to the Laurel Heights Townhomes.
Has there been, I mean, I guess they've been notified of the public hearing tonight, but has there been any further engagement?
So I don't know if they're-
Okay. I'd just be curious to hear their reactions. Especially as they're looking into the back of a unit, from what I understand to be the front of their units. Right?
Yeah, that's right. One of the things I did pass along to Mr. Solzby, and it's something, you know, maybe to take a look at, it might be worthwhile to consider some fencing along that line. But there are some plantings there. Like I said, it's not like a total screen or anything like that, but there's plantings every few feet.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like there's a wide enough strip that you could do an evergreen, a fully opaque evergreen screen between the two. Fence may be a better option. I prefer landscape, obviously, so that's just my thought on the buffer there.
Additional questions for staff or the applicant? Comments?
I would mention from a screening standpoint, plans are not fully realized now, but our finished floor is going to be in the 10 to 15 feet lower than that road range. So it's not like you would be looking out there and somebody's in their backyard barbecuing, you'd be looking at them. So that's all going to be at least one story roughly below that. If it's two-story townhomes, you might be looking into the second story. And that's if you were looking dead level and not through the trees and where your sightline projection for that would be. So I think it's going to be fairly well screened between the grade change and the existing vegetation. Obviously, we can augment that if that's what Planning Commission would like for us to do.
Sure. Of what's there existing, yeah, that would be good to see. Is that landscaping on their property?
It's right on the property.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
I'm going to, Mr. Chairman, just note for the online viewers that the applicant is showing a picture of the existing buffer to the members of the Planning Commission right now.
Thank you. We don't have the picture available to put in the report, but yeah. Thank you for that. Any additional discussion or questions? Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a-
Now, is that just to approve without condition?
Motion to approve with conditions set forth by the city.
Thank you, okay. I have a, just to be clear, I have a motion from Commissioner Sofield to approve with the following conditions, as supplied by staff, the applicant shall satisfy the applicable conditions provided by the Greenville County Subdivision Advisory Committee, and the full civil engineering and landscape plan shall meet the standards and codes of the City of Malden. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion to approve with the conditions outlined by staff.
Thank you. I have a second to recommend the council to approve from Commissioner Woolard. Any last minute discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Appears to be unanimous, thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is a discussion regarding zoning text amendment for light pole banners. We're going to follow the same procedures before. Mr. Dearhog, will you please introduce the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have shown on the screen a couple of examples of light pole banners. Sometimes it's easier to see it than for me to try to explain it in words. These types of banners are used in other communities oftentimes to promote cultural and civic events, while also producing a festive appearance along the streets. Recently, the city's been approached by a public agency wishing to erect banners on the light poles in front of their facility, similar to what you might see in downtown Greenville or at some high schools like JL Man High School. In fact, it was a high school that, Malden High School, that asked about this. Some of the city officials have expressed interest in amending the city ordinances to allow for this type of display. And so staff has worked on providing or drafting an ordinance to this effect that would allow these. The, I'll give you a summary of the ordinance that's being presented to you tonight. The ordinance would amend the zoning ordinance to allow banners attached to light poles. The City of Malden, local public agencies, local nonprofit groups would be eligible groups that would be able to utilize these or others who are running events. Banner must promote an activity, an event, program, or facility that's located within the city. Banners have maximum width and lengths that are prescribed to them. There is a limit on the size of sponsoring corporations can put on it so that it doesn't turn into a commercial sign, no more than 20% there. That's pretty typical in what staff has researched among other communities. Generally, only one banner might be, would be displayed on a pole, except for you could have two, like you see on the right-hand side, where they're identical banners and in terms of shape, size, and position. The banners would have to be displayed vertically, like is shown on the screen. There's a minimum clearance we would require below the banner, so it doesn't hopefully hit anyone's head or if it's close to the road that it doesn't hit a car. Or a car doesn't hit it, more likely. And where there's multiple banners going up in the same vicinity, this ordinance would require they maintain similar heights and orientations so that they look like they're coordinated. There's some time restrictions on how long the banners can be up. If it's advertising an event, it can be displayed for up to 30 days. If it's more along the lines where it's advertising community information or a public facility or some sort of civic pride program, it could be permitted for a year at a time. The banners would be restricted to the property where the event or the facility is at or in the right-of-way that's right in front of them, except for banners displayed by the city. And the banners will need to be maintained in good condition and removed when torn, frayed, faded, damaged, et cetera. This ordinance has been reviewed by the city attorney. In fact, he kind of reviewed it in two waves. The copy that you got in the mail was after his first review. And then I emailed you an updated copy with a few additional revisions that he made. You'll probably note that the main revisions he made the second go-around was we were specific before in the initial ordinance to state that the banner, these types of banners could not be used for political or religious messages. And he's a little uncomfortable with calling them out, so he reworded that section just to say, instead of saying what's not eligible, he just focused on saying what is eligible. That's the overview. Glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I can't imagine how anyone would have any conflict of interest regarding all this, unless they ran a sign company or something. So that's okay. There aren't any, there's no one online seeking any comment regarding this. Any discussion or questions from the commission?
These poles are owned by a parcel ID that it sits on, is that correct?
These light poles may be owned by different agencies. Some of them may be owned by Duke. There may be some, I'm not sure, by the city. And it just all depends. Some of the parking lights on the actual property are certainly usually owned by that property owner. But so there could be different agencies that own the poles that someone wants to put them on. One of the requirements in this ordinance is that they need to make sure they have permission to install it on any pole from whoever owns that pole.
So that answers the question that this isn't a profit center for the city, then?
This is what?
It's not a profit center for the city, then?
Not really.
Which, go ahead, can I finish? Which number item in the ordinance was revised from that religious and political statement? Sorry, I have the old one printed.
It's okay, I do too.
Number two, and I'm sorry, I should have printed those off for you.
That's fine.
And let me, I think there was one other section, let me pull it up here real quick.
Looks like there was some language added to 5C or size, design, and material. I've got it pulled up on my phone, what you sent. We'll slow it down. It's Monday, I sent this out.
Yeah, so let me read on the eligibility part, what the revisions say now. Broken into two sections instead of the three that were there. A is, the City of Malden and civic institutions are eligible to display banners on light poles or similar poles in accordance with the standards herein. Civic institutions include local public agencies and local nonprofit and charitable groups. And B is, banners must promote a public activity, event, or program located within the city limits of Malden that promotes the corporate interests and welfare of the city. And the other section that was revised was under number five, the size, design, and material. At the end of C, where it says sponsorship and corporate name and logo, local logo recognition shall not exceed more than 20% of the banner size. Yet the name and logo of local public agencies and local nonprofit groups are not subject to this standard. So in an example, if Malden High School was putting up a banner and they want their name and logo to take up the whole banner, that's fine. They can take up the whole banner. What this would restrict is if somewhere, let's say like Taco Bell, was sponsoring something at Malden High School, and they wanted to be listed on that banner going up. Well, the Taco Bell name and logo can't take up more than 20% of that banner. Not giving a freebie for Taco Bell to put up a whole Taco Bell banner in front of Malden High Schools.
But they can put Taco Bell on the banner because Taco Bell is sponsoring the event.
Correct.
And no specific products being advertised.
What's that?
No specific products being advertised, right?
Do, and it doesn't look like we state in here, but should there be a proximity requirement from one sponsored event to another? For example, there's, because I have a few concerns. And one of them is that if you have banners promoting the farmer's market, and then, you know, less than a block away- banners promoting the farmer's market and then, you know, less than a block away, you have a school promoting banners for something else, I think it might end up looking like a lot of visual white noise and conflict between the branding that's happening with those banners. So while I don't think it's necessary to say, oh, you can't have banners within 100 feet of another banners, I'm hesitant to say that you'd want more than one banner promoting something at the same time. You know, I just, I fear that you could run away and there's a banner on every property for a different event and all this. I mean, that that's an extreme, but when you're protecting the city's brand and these banners are in the public view shed, I would be worried that it could get a little confusing.
Yeah, there certainly could be some coordination issues with if they're not being coordinated, that it maybe look a little haphazard.
Yeah.
But I've seen too in some communities where they'll have multiple events going on. And so they'll have multiple banners intermixed actually with each other. Now, the best way I've seen this approached is where you kind of do like every other, like farmer's market, then zoo event, farmer's market, zoo event, kind of alternating down the street.
Right.
And maybe that's something we need to consider to add into this perhaps, but but I think overall, the interest here is some of the other staff and officials that I've talked to is they're interested in actually seeing a lot of these around. They actually like the potential for these to add a lot of festivity look to the city. So right now, the approach we've taken with this ordinance is to err on the side of letting them a little more than not.
I think my perspective is a little more protective of the city's brand and not, like you said, having it look haphazard. Like you don't want it to look like anybody. And I guess that's another question too, is what counts as a light pole? I mean, anyone can call. I mean, is it like a Cobra Head or is it just a decorative light hole, light pole? Is it a telephone pole that a light is on? What are we allowed to actually fix these two? Because I think they look really pretty when they're on a decorative lamppost, but if they're just put up on something that is not bad, they might look a little trashy.
Right now, the way it's intended is to allow them on the decorative light poles, but also the parking lot lights that you see in parking lot areas, which are more kind of like overhead type lights. And as well as some utility poles, because I foresee that we've got some areas where we don't have the decorative lights and the city may probably want to put out some.
See some of that going down Butler, going like towards the high school, you know.
I suppose any like any pole that had a Christmas lights on it, one of these signs on it.
Yeah. And so you've probably seen traditionally that our, our Christmas lights are largely hung from utility poles.
It's true. Yeah, I guess there might not be enough decorative lights to go around.
I think the the time limit does kind of limit how many can be out there at any one time to some degree. I think 30 days is probably reasonable. I can't imagine it being too much less. So that seems like a good, like a compromise.
Yeah, I mean, I could even see 30 days being, I mean, if you're, if it's promoting something for, let's say for a holiday, that 30 days might be too limiting.
Yeah, if it was something like the Olympics coming in, you probably want to have it longer than that.
Right.
But for most events, I think 30 days is a pretty standard.
The season.
Is pretty typical standard. And it probably is helpful because if it's out there much earlier than 30 days, by the time you get around to the event, people have tuned it out. So it's just become part of what they see every day and they may not really be paying attention to it anymore.
Do you see in other communities that they require you to put some element of the Malden brand imaging on the banners to incorporate it into their signage, just so that there's some sort of cohesion between the?
No, I didn't see that.
Place making?
So I did study about 20 different ordinance.
Okay.
I don't see that in any of them that I remember.
Or any approvals of, you know, submitting a, you know, a digital mockup of what the banner banners before you have them printed?
Well, we certainly require that.
We do have that.
Because they'll have to get a permit and we would require.
An actual.
Image of what's going to go.
But we're outside of, you know, the road and Main Street here. Is it a concern or certain apartment complexes or?
Apartment complexes wouldn't be eligible under this. I mean, it'll, it'll, yeah, largely be like, honestly, the city will probably be, I imagine, would be the biggest user of this. It would be for city events and that kind of stuff. There is potential that we could see some stuff out towards Bridgeway because they may do some community events out that way. And if the soccer stadium ends up coming to fruition, certainly there would be an opportunity to for them to promote events there as well in partnership with the city. The school as well, but you know, outside of those, I don't don't know that I'm expecting a whole lot else. In fact, this was something that we, I say we, so I've worked for Simpsonville, City of Simpsonville before coming to Malden, and we had this on our ordinance as something allowed for a number of years, at least while I worked there. And the city of Malden, City of Simpsonville was the only one who ever put up banners.
That addresses your point as well about the Malden city branding. If we put one up, the city puts one up, we're going to have the logo on there. That's a good question. But I think it should be well represented normally.
Yeah, I mean, it's important for place making. It's important for identity, knowing where they are.
Yeah, I agree.
Who's behind the event?
I suppose we could revisit if we weren't seeing it enough.
One more question. Who, who puts the structures on these poles? And when there's not a banner on the pole, do the, the supports remain in place? Does it work?
So it would be up to the applicant who's applying for the banner to put up the supports. And see here, there is something about that. Oh, yes. So it says in the ordinance that banners shall be attached to the light pole by a mounting structure or hardware that at a minimum will secure the top and the bottom of the banner. The mounting hardware should be similar in color to the light pole and positioned below the light fixture. As far as whether they stay up or not, that probably is really going to be at the discretion of whoever owns that pole, whether they.
Just imagining if that pulls all the way down Main Street and.
Silver bands around them.
There's bands around everything and there's no banners and it's just kind of looks like a skeleton.
Yeah, I, so they should match the color, which at least will help part there, unlike the photos you actually see here. So in these two instances, the hardware that's being used to attach.
Top one on the farmer's market looks like it was zip tied on.
Yeah.
Something going on there.
Well, there's like a wire running off.
Okay. That's one of those.
Not to be too nitpicky, but this won't interfere with the Christmas lights, will it?
No.
No, it'd be lower than that. Well, you know, we're talking about it, so I thought I'd ask.
We'll make sure that takes priority in case the city will call dibs on the poles that wants to pull them, put those up.
Any additional discussion regarding this item? Hearing none, do I have a motion regarding our discussion about zoning text amendment?
What would we be doing, recommending adopting the ordinance or?
Recommending approval to the council. A revised edition that didn't make your printback.
I'll recommend approval for changes, light pole banner ordinance.
Thank you. I have a motion to recommend to council that we approve the change, the text amendment to the installation of banners and light poles and similar poles in the ordinance from Commissioner Pagliolunga. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a second from Commissioner Sofield. Hearing no more discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Appears to be unanimous again, though we are recommending council to adopt the amendments. Thank you. Any other business?
No other business, but I will just make you aware that we have received some applications to fill the vacant, two vacant seats that we have on the planning commission right now. So the city council is preparing to interview those applicants in March.
Great. Be nice to have a full commission. Since there's no more items, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Willard. Do I hear a second?
Second the motion.
A second from Commissioner Sofield. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.